Good afternoon. I hereby call this meeting, this special meeting of the NACDOCHAS ISD Board of Trustees, by video conference to order. A quorum of the following board members is president. Vice President James Matoya.
Here.
Secretary Mindy Winslow.
Here.
Leibeth Abt. Leibeth, can you hear us? All right, we'll work on that. I think she was joining us via Zoom. She was with us before the meeting. Hopefully, she'll be able to come back in here in just a second. Reverend James Urban.
Yeah.
Dr. Tyrell Gromon.
Here.
And Farshid Nariman.
Yeah.
Right. On March 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Kim Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow for telephone or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although all members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum and attendance at this meeting by video conference. We are meeting by the use of Zoom software application, which allows for two-way communication for members of the public. As we would for any in-person meeting, members of the public who followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during the public comment portion will be unmuted for three minutes to speak. If you would like to provide comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference, please follow the instructions on the meeting notice. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board-adoption procedures to the extent practical. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The Zoom software application allows for people to view and interact. We want to apologize for any unforeseeable difficulties we have and ask for your patience. If you have questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787, or by email at T O M A at O A G dot Texas dot gov. All right. I'd like to now ask Dr. Gromon if he would be willing to give our invocation tonight.
Sure.
Thank you.
Lord Jesus, thank you for being here with us, and thank you for being here helping all of our teachers and all of our students. We pray that you will grant us wisdom to walk in light and do what's good. We ask this to be glorifying and honoring to your name, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, sir. The next item on our agenda tonight is public comment. Those wishing to address the board during public comments should have emailed a request to the district administration by 4:00 p.m. today. We have four requests to speak today. The time limit will be three minutes per person addressing the board, and Mr. Michael Martin will keep time for us today. Mr. Martin, are you with us?
Yes, Madam President, I'm here.
Thank you, sir. Our first speaker tonight is Mr. Kenneth Negron. Are you with us, Kenneth?
I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. You have the floor, sir.
All right. Good evening, NACDOCHAS ISD School Board. My name is Kenneth Negron, and I am a teacher at Mike Moses Middle School. This year is unprecedented, and everyone is trying to do the best that they can to ensure that students are getting the best and most well-rounded education possible. This is never more true than watching the teachers at Mike Moses and within the district work tirelessly to create in-person and online learning interactive, personal, and enjoyable. I have watched teachers learn a whole new way to teach, implement new strategies, and adapt to the ever-changing landscape of education. I'm inspired by these professionals and can say without a doubt that the students of NACDOCHAS ISD will get the best education available because of their teachers in the classroom and online. In regard to this special board meeting, I want to ensure that the NACDOCHAS School District, the school board, and the superintendent are prepared to honor these teachers for working the extra five days that you are recommending adding to the end of the school year. Our contract started on August 5th, 2020, and the 187 days of our contract would have ended May 28th, 2021. If the motion you all have, if the motion you all have set to vote on tonight passes to delay the start of school by a week, start date of September 8th, 2020, and extend the school year by a week, then we will now work until June 4th, 2021, which puts us, teachers, working 192 days. Though I have spoken about teachers so far, I cannot finish my statement and ask my question without mentioning that the district need also be prepared and acknowledge that the other professionals and staff that make a school function during the day need to be compensated accordingly for these extra days that you are voting on. These include but are not limited to front office staff, custodial staff, paraprofessionals, school officers, and any other staff that I did not include. Additionally, if the school board votes to extend the school year again, other term contracts will begin to fall into this request as well, and the school board will need to be prepared to pay those term contracts accordingly, such as 197-day contracts, 207, et cetera. So finally, my question. As a school district, the superintendent, and the school board, are you all prepared to pay the teachers and the other staff lawfully and accordingly for these extra five days of work? If yes, that is great news. If no, then you need to deny this motion and have the school year start on August 31st, 2020, with an end date of May 28th, 2021. Thank you for your time tonight, and I hope that you all make the right decision in paying the teachers of this district accordingly.
Thank you, Kenneth. We appreciate you being with us tonight. Our next speaker is Mr. Gary Smith. Mr. Smith, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. The floor is yours, sir.
Okay, great. I'm a teacher at NAC High School, and last year when we ran through the shutdown, we had some challenges with the technology. And after dealing with Canvas and so on and experiencing this, having what I experienced, I was reminded that, you know, we're developing all of this stuff with no students. And it was the students that took us about a month to grab hold of the technology and engage and figure out how to use it. So by my count, there's about seven different platforms, there may be more, that I can think of. And when I developed this stuff in Canvas, I write processes for the students to use based on what I'm seeing in Microsoft 10. But the other night, I said, well, let me see if I can do it on my phone. So I pulled it out, and I pulled out Canvas, and I brought it up, and lo and behold, it took me about three hours to figure out how to get it done. So the processes that we are writing are not necessarily perfect. While they're similar and useful in other platforms, they're not necessarily going to work straight away. And I think what's going to happen is the teacher's going to go through around a second wave of learning, and the students are going to come in with a first wave, and we're going to have a perfect storm for about at least two or three or four days while we're trying to teach content and at the same time trying to teach integration with the digital systems that we have. So I don't know exactly how to make the request, but I wanted to point out that when this possible start time change came in, I said, hmm, we need to consider the amount of time that the students are going to take to engage in it. For me, I would like to have like two days of students, and all I do is talk to them about how to engage with Canvas and how to input assignments, how to do assignments, things like that, how to sign up and do the attendance, all of that stuff. It's going to take us a learning curve just with the kids to bring that up. Also, another thing that I think we need to consider is that we've got the, obviously, the A/B days, and there are no time really built in for the online students to have tutorial time. We've got to do something with that. I'm not exactly sure how to handle it, but my point in this talk is for you guys to consider these aspects of what we're dealing with when you're doing the possible schedule push or the new schedule time. I don't know if you can do part of it or all of it or of the schedule push, or there may be some consideration we want to do with respect to having a couple of days be in there not for curriculum so much as to how to engage the kids with digital learning. I've already started, and we're, you know, haven't gotten the kids involved in Canvas because we don't know where they are. But I've started contacting my kids, and I think they're ready to go. We've just got to get them going. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you joining us tonight, Mr. Smith. Our third speaker tonight is Melinda Timmons. Melinda, can you hear us? Are you with us?
Hmm, she needs to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there you are.
There I am. Okay.
Hello. All right. Mr. Martin will start your three minutes. Ma'am, you've got the floor.
Thank you. President Fitch, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Trujillo. My name is Melinda Timmons, and this is my third year teaching at Carpenter Elementary. I am speaking on behalf of the teachers of Texas A&amp;T. I would like to address a comment that was published in last week's newspaper. The article stated that teachers were not ready to receive our students back into the classroom. We want the parents, community members, and you to know that teachers have been ready to welcome our students back into our classrooms since we said goodbye in March. With each new guideline and as registration numbers change, we have to ensure we follow the safety measures recommended by health experts, that we have a safe and healthy learning environment for our students. One of the most daunting challenges teachers are currently facing is the revelation of becoming virtual and face-to-face teachers simultaneously. Since we just recently learned we are expected to do both, we have many things to learn, and many of our questions are not able to be answered by our campus administrators. While we are both mentally and physically ready to welcome our children back into the classroom, there are extenuating circumstances that are limiting our preparations. When will we have planning times for our virtual and our face-to-face classes? One or two planning periods a week are not enough. Our brand-new learning management system, Canvas, requires a multi-step process to upload just one document to ensure our younger users have no problem navigating it. Teachers are struggling to set up safety protocols without knowing class sizes for our face-to-face classes. Teachers still know very little about how to prepare to effectively teach and keep our students safe. These are the things that are out of our control and are hindering teachers' ability to prepare. One, class size. More than 10 students per class definitely prevents us from safely conducting class while meeting CDC guidelines. Two, teaching both virtually and face-to-face. How are teachers being supported by the district to prepare and execute the lessons on the same day? And when will we have time to plan and execute both of them? Three, safety protocols. The Smart Start Plan outlines broad safety protocols, but we still need answer about so many specific guidelines. We need concrete answers in a timely manner so we can plan for our classes and students. Thank you for your time. We can't wait to have our students come back to us.
Thank you, Mrs. Timmons. Appreciate you being with us tonight. Our fourth speaker tonight is Michael Luke Russell. Michael, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. All right. Mr. Martin, will you, we'll start your time, sir. You have the floor.
Thank you. President Fitch, trustees, Dr. Trujillo, and our community. My name is Luke Russell. I'm an NISD teacher. On my first day of in-service this year, I went home to my wife, who works in another district, and bragged, "My school is better than your school. We have a real workable plan that will keep students safe and give us time to work with online learners." I'm concerned about the erosion of that plan, particularly the change in policy regarding the use of masks. As I have tried to discover where the confusion has occurred, I can squarely lay the misinformation at TEA's feet. In their Public Health Guidance for School, TEA says, "Mask, including non-medical and medical-grade disposable face mask and cloth coverings over the nose and mouth. Full-face shields may be used in place of mask to protect eyes, nose, and mouth whenever a mask is not feasible." From this, we can see that face shields are not masks and that masks are preferable to face shields. They go on to say, "Schools are required to comply with the governor's executive order regarding the wearing of mask." It is clear that the governor intends the use of face mask as coverings when he says, "I have joined the medical experts in consistently encourage people to use face coverings," and health authorities have repeatedly emphasized that wearing face coverings is one of the most important and effective tools for reducing the spread of COVID-19. The medical experts are not ambiguous on what type of face covering should be worn. Both the CDC and the NIH have released guidelines that have mask-wearing as a cornerstone of public safety measures during the pandemic. We have long known that masks can stop the spread of certain types of disease, and that is why mask-wearing was mandatory during the 1918 flu pandemic. The way that these masks work is by capturing the moisture that escapes from your mouth when you breathe. Though the droplets are microscopic, relative to the size of the virus, they are enormous. Imagine a huge skyscraper. Now imagine a tennis ball. This is the relative distance difference between the virus and the droplets that carry them. The mask can easily catch the relatively large droplets, but the droplets escape into the air and evaporate, leaving the virus hanging in the air for three hours, easily penetrating the mask of someone else who can possibly become infected. This is why wearing a mask isn't as much about keeping you safe as it is keeping other people safe. While the NIH recommends face shields as an additional measure for teachers, face shields do not stop the moisture from escaping into the air. Dr. Robert Redfield, the head of the CDC, says that we need mask-wearing to approach 99 percentile for the practice to be effective in our community. I know that masks can be uncomfortable, and some feel that it is an infringement on their freedom. However, I've worked in education for nearly 20 years, and I've often infringed on students' freedom when that freedom puts other students' safety and well-being at risk. When a student is choking another student, I do not say, "I know that that's something you would prefer to do, so I don't want you to restrict your freedom." I say, "Stop." The one student's safety takes precedence over the other student's freedom. One principal or teacher's opinions do not take precedence over their staff or student's safety. I know that we are all doing the best we can here, and we certainly have a lot on our plates. You probably don't need one more thing to think about, but this is about our most basic responsibility to our students and our communities. We should not harm them. And we know that medical experts are recommending this as the very first step towards community safety. So to me, this is something that we don't need to think about. It's imperative. Please consider revising the allowance of face shields. Our community's long-term ability to keep schools open depends on it. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Appreciate you being with us today as well.
Thank you.
Dr. Tejillo, as a matter of, I guess it would be law and policy, do you want to clarify anything on that last, in regard to face shields?
Absolutely. Mr. Whitaker, to all the staff and employees in the district, did receive some communication to clarify with regards to the wearing of masks. We made sure that staff is aware, not only in our employee handbook, the required use of a mask, but we also talked about the actual signing document that each employee was able to get. We wanted to reiterate that in a communication, and that went to all NISD staff, Mr. Whitaker, to make sure that we have that as an option. Not as an option, but as a required expectation for all employees in the district. And we can refer back to, and in that document says, if we have any situation where an employee is not doing what they're required to do with regards to the use of that device, the supervising supervisor that supervises that individual, that's where it would begin, and then that will be reported to Mr. Whitaker with HR.
Thank you for that clarification, policy clarification.
Matt, ask a question in regards to that?
I'm afraid, because it's not on the agenda, we cannot, I'm afraid, Mr. Russell, but what I can ask him to do is get with you after the meeting, and you guys can have a conversation offline.
Thank you.
Thank you. The board will now conduct an executive closed session to discuss the items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act and is allowed by Texas Government Code, Sections 551.071, 551.074, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. It is now 5:22 p.m.
Ms. Fitch?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to give a time on what we will be back by, no earlier than?
I believe I saw it on the agenda that it said we would be back no earlier than 5:30. I don't have a copy of it here, though, I'm afraid, but I believe it was noted on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you, Les.
Dr. Trujillo, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. We're here to go.
All right, good deal.
Hello, Mr. Martin?
Hello.
All right, Leibeth, do we have you back in?
You do.
All right.
Hey, Ms. Fitch, can you give me just a moment?
Sir, let me know when you're ready.
Okay.
Did you see the Mavericks Sunday night?
I ain't watching Mavericks.
It was late at night. No, did you see them Sunday?
No, I didn't get to see them.
They beat the Clippers.
That young guy, that.
Lakers, yeah. Get the winning shot.
I saw that.
Oh, man.
I want to watch it tonight.
I am, yes.
Mavericks were my favorite team when I first went to them.
I watched the Lakers last night, and it was like...
Okay, Ms. Fitch, it is good to go.
Thank you, Mr. Longberger. The board is now reconvening into open session at 6:04 p.m. The next item on our agenda is consider revisions to the instructional calendar for the 2020-2021 year, and that is, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, President Fitch, members of the board, Dr. Trujillo. This evening, I'm here to, administration is recommending that the board approve adjusting the 2021 instructional calendar for the student's start date from August 31st to September 8th, 2020, moving the start date one week. This would allow for some additional time for our PPE or protective gear equipment to come in.
Mr. Martin?
And also, I'm sorry.
Excuse me for just one moment before you jump into there, okay? Can you give me the floor for just a second?
Sure.
All right. I just want to make sure that we communicate that our staff have done a tremendous job. We have had the opportunity, I have personally had the opportunity to visit campuses, walk into the classrooms, and see our teachers. They, the classrooms are exciting, they're warm, they're friendly. I even called one classroom Zen because the way the classroom was designed. At no time do I want us or myself in the communication to go out as we're looking at this because the teachers are not prepared. Absolutely, our teachers have done a tremendous job since we let out in the summer, and honestly, when they took break, I really believe our teachers didn't ever stop thinking about what they can do. I got to see Mr. Cobb over at the high school. There is no way those little bunny rabbits raised themselves. So he's been working hard, as well as the rest of our teachers, to get ready for the start of school. And there is no doubt that if it weren't for some extenuating circumstances, we would be ready to jump in there and meet our kids and do a tremendous job on August 31st. That was the goal when we came in to talk to the board. But because there are some extenuating circumstances that will converge and make the learning that the teachers have worked so hard to make it difficult, we are making this proposal and this request to the board and for your consideration tonight. I just wanted to make sure that the teachers that are out there, I see you, I see the work that you've done, we recognize it, we know you're championing for the kids, and we know you're ready for the kiddos to be there. But at the same time, I want to make sure that there is not a surprise, and unfortunately, we have received some late information, and that will complicate the work and the efforts that our teachers have. And I do not want a single teacher in this district being frustrated by the disruption that could possibly happen. Our kids are better than this. Our kids don't deserve any of this. Once we start, we want to get it right, and we want to run and have an amazing school year and not look back. We will possibly have a hiccup, and at no time am I promising a bubble. We are not promising a bubble that will keep everyone safe 100% of the time, but we are promising that we're going to do everything we can in our power to make sure that we've taken care of the health and well-being of all of our kids, and most importantly, the greatest resource we have is our teachers. Because if a teacher goes down with something and we haven't done the things that we need to take care of, it will impact the classroom, it will impact a group of kids. So I wanted to make sure, before we jump in there, Mr. Martin, that we have an opportunity to paint the picture as to, our people were ready. Our people are ready, and they're ready to hit the ground running. But in light of some recent, very recent information, we wanted to make sure the board was informed and consider and look at the considerations that we have. We've worked diligently. I need to applaud my team. We've been looking at every little piece to make sure that we can address any particular questions that we may, that may arise as we're planning forward. So with that being said, Mr. Martin, I appreciate you giving me the floor just for a moment, but I wanted to make sure we can paint the picture a little bit and let our teachers know that we appreciate the work they've done.
Oh. I've lost your sound.
Second, Leibeth, tell us when you got us back.
I've got you now, uh-huh.
Reverend Urban?
Just, if you could just speak to two things for us, if it's okay?
Okay.
And then, number one, as was alluded to, the budget impact, and number two, the hurricane.
Yes.
Hurricane Laura that's coming and how is that going to affect or do we need to further adjust the recommendation that you guys have?
I don't, I don't think we do need to do any further adjustment. And I, you're going to hear exactly to the point of the question in the presentation they're going to have. Now, the hurricane is something that just kind of just, it's a little flavor that the good Lord has put before us, right before all of this, just to spice things up a little bit and keep us grounded. But like any wonderful school district, we're going to be able to adjust. But what I'll do is I will allow, if you will, Mr. Martin proceed because you're going to find the answers are right there. And he's got, we've got some, we're excited about what we're presenting to you all and it's going to address some of the questions that were raised. Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trillo, and I concur with your assessment. Our teachers are very ready to move forward and students are ready to come back to school and we're ready for them to be here. We just, again, want to make sure that we have done the best possible job we can to make sure that we have everything in place. We know that there will be hiccups along the way, but we're going to work through them. Tonight, we are presenting two options for the board's consideration of calendar start dates for our students, one being Option A, which you will find at your places, at your table inside a folder. Option A is a calendar that we have developed, we have counted, recounted, and I want to comment on, I think one of our teachers commented earlier about teachers being paid for additional days and everything. I just want to address the fact that if administration brings to the board a proposal to change a calendar, we've taken into consideration compensation and would never bring any recommendation to the board that would not properly pay the employee for additional work done. We, we understand and we definitely are on top of it. We, our business office, our academic office, my office, we've all, and as well as Dr. Trillo, been working on this constantly, trying to make sure that we had some good recommendations for the board this evening to consider. So looking at Option A, what we have, what we're recommending is, first, the first thing that you see is at the top, it's pink looking to me, is two days here in August, that is August the 27th and 28th. Administration is proposing that due to Hurricane Laura now, coming so close to the East Texas area, we are proposing that the board considers closing the district for those two days. And so to answer your question, Reverend, we are making a recommendation on this calendar to close for two days to allow safety, for safety purposes, to allow the Hurricane Laura to pass. The second thing that we have done in this calendar is we have adjusted professional development days as well as some teacher work days. So first of all, and we're in doing, in starting a week later, which is five days, we're proposing to start on September the 8th. That's one week later than you all have already, than the board's already approved on the calendar, which equates to five days. So two days have been taken if the board approves the 27th and 28th as some emergency weather days. Also, on down later in the year, what we have done is we've adjusted the calendar to remove some, again, professional development dates such as, on October the 13th, it was scheduled to be a professional development teacher work day and a student holiday. We are proposing to remove that and make it not a regular school day. November the 30th is another day that will schedule for the same thing as well as January the 5th. So by removing those dates, what we've done essentially is the last day of school and graduation would be, still be May 28th. And we have come back in June due to our technology initiative this year and also needing that teacher work day to, for teachers to complete grades and turn in equipment or, and also our one-to-one initiative with our student equipment so that we can recapture that, those devices. We've added a work day at the end on June the 1st and then a professional development day on June the 2nd, of which we would ask the teachers to work on curriculum as well as some summer school and some other professional development type things. So that's Option A. I'll be happy to take any questions that the board may have. And I will mention, we don't have all of our PPE gear in. Let me move over to that just for a moment. We don't, we, from TEA, we were thankful that they have sent us the equipment that they have. We received two of three shipments through Region 7. And we were, we're happy about the equipment, but there is some, some of it that we feel that we can do a little bit better by our employees, by buying them a better quality facial shield. I'm not sure, Dr. Trillo, did you bring your facial shield today?
I did. Matter of fact, this is the, this is the item that was brought from, for instance, I'm going to come, I'm going to step up here so everybody can see it and they can see it even on the screen. The, this is what the state sent us, which is basically an eight and a half by 11 piece of plastic. There are three foam pieces that are super glued to the top and a piece of elastic that has been stapled all the way around and is to be worn on the heads of our teachers. And I appreciate the work that the state did bring in order to get this device to us, but it's still not the caliber of what we need in our staff. So what we've done is immediately upon receiving, Mr. Martin, when did we get these?
We received those back in early July.
Okay, and then we distributed these from, to the campuses, they got to the campuses this last week when we, they had it. The shield that we purchased was a Z Shield. And Z Shield is one that covers much more effectively than what this shield would have. The plastic is even much more durable. Whenever an individual wears it, they simply, put it on, wear it here. And when they're working with kids, everything is shielded from the bottom up. And whenever they're not needing to be covered, then they can actually slide, slip that down when we're looking at it. The shield is regularly worn. I was just sharing with board, my, there's some folks, my wife, for one, wear the shield as well, as where as the mask. Because we do need to make sure, and I need to make sure, clarify this, that the expectation is to wear face covering. And when the state defines that, we have some folks, for whatever reason, we would have some administrators that are in the district that choose to wear a shield, but we want to make sure we get them a shield that is much more effective in meeting the nay and the knees of our, of our, of our, of our students and our teachers. And so this shield here allows them to kind of move down and be able to be in that area where they're working without having to expose themselves and then they can easily go into a shield. Those are the two shields that we're looking at that came in. The teachers will still receive the state shield that they got. But this shield here is scheduled to come in when, Mr. Martin?
About 10 to 14 days.
I thought they were next week.
Yes, I see, yes, okay, I'm sorry, yes, those are next week. I'm thinking about the other device.
This one is scheduled to come in for our teachers and they'll have them in hand this coming weeks.
That new shield has basically closed the bottoms under the chin, correct?
Yes, sir. It actually, what it does is when the teachers put it on, it basically puts everything that we're talking about droplets, everything is, is in, it's in here. The teachers are also working with students. And the difference between the two shields is as they're working with students, the students are in a hitting table or if they're working there with the teacher, they're working below the teacher. If you notice, everything's covered from down chest up to the top. Any heat or anything, the fogging, all of that goes straight up. If I were to put this device, which I will have matted hair, it's basically this and it's wide open and it speaks directly to what the gentleman mentioned earlier. That's why we are, our expectation in letting you know all employees, when they're at work, when they're here, we, our expectation is they're wearing a mask. That's the expectation that we have. But we also have an understanding that the state has given them the option of wearing a shield. But, and we have a number of reasons why they would be wearing a mask shield. Speech therapist, speech pathologist, we have some, some students that may be autistic or may not want things touching their faces, so it's another option that we can provide. But by the letter of the rule, the, what our expectations that we're getting communicated is they must have a face covering that's in there. And that is highlighted in either a mask or a shield that we're looking at. Although, I know the research is talking about the mask and the more it's effective, but the key is, the intention we're getting is either a shield or a mask. And that's why we're finding the best shield that we can get for our teachers to be able to keep not only themselves safe, but also look at the droplets as, as we're visiting and interacting with kids.
I think that's very correct because the shield under your chin, that's not allowing anything to drop down.
Yes, and this will get to every, we've ordered this for every staff member. And when they arrive, we wanted to make sure every staff member that interacts with students, administrators that interact with students or counselors or social workers, anybody who is needing to have the shield, they will have this device with them.
That's a great idea. Is Mr. Martin still there?
Mr. Martin?
I am.
According to administration's recommendation of Option A, it appears that we won't need to make a budget adjustment with Option A, is that correct?
Reverend Urban, that is correct. There would be no need to make any budget adjustments if the board chooses Option A. Also, while we were, and excuse me, and let me, let me hit this, the, we want, we would like to make an emergency purchase of death shields for, for our classrooms and our teachers. We want our teachers to have a safe space. I'm back on PPE, of course. We want our teachers to have a safe space in their classroom as well as we want our students to be safe. Our campus has made a request that we purchase some, what we call tri-fold shields with the crystal, crystal clear window inside of them. What this is, is a three dimension type of device. I think Dr. Trillo is demonstrating it there. And so we, the campus originally requested 2,000 of those. Administration, Dr. Trillo, Dr. Hill, Ms. Barbara, myself, and Mr. Whitaker decided, hey, let's double that order, let's, let's make it 4,000 and let's also include office staff and, and our principals and assistant principals. Let's try to at least get every employee one of these shields to work with across the district. So administration is going to be asking to go ahead and make a, an emergency purchase, not, not this evening we won't, but we will bring it back to the board later this month for approval. However, we'd like to go ahead and move forward and make this purchase for 5,030 of these devices so that we can go ahead and get them in. The vendor has told us that if we made, if we go ahead and make the order, we can get them in within 10 to 14 days. That, that's where I got mixed up with my order, order dates there, Dr. Trillo. But, excuse me, Reverend Urban, you are correct. Should the board approve calendar Option A, there would be no need for budget adjustments. We're just moving days around basically and not requiring as many professional development days. I'll be happy to go with Option B if the board so pleases.
Yes. Mr. Martin, before we go there, can you talk to them about the technology? Because that's also rationale with regard to moving the date to September the 8th.
Yes, sir, thank you for reminding me about that. So our, our teacher laptops are due in actually Thursday, the 27th, this Thursday, the same day that the now hurricane is supposed to be coming through East Texas. We still are fearful that, that shipment will be dropped off here at the DSC and we'll be able to bring in some of our staff to start to get those things joined to the domain. So by allowing, allowing another week, that will give us some, give us some time to get those new teacher laptops in the hands of teachers as well. And, and it will also allow the teachers a little bit more time to, once they have them in their hands, to become familiar with them so that they're not getting a brand new device and then a brand new set of students all at the same time and trying to learn, you know, how to get around the device itself. So also, as you know, we, we have participated in the TEA Operation Connectivity, which will, you know, those, which are the student devices, the student hotspots, which are still in order, we're still on, on pace with the state of Texas and it gives us a little bit more time to get those devices in as well.
All right, so I have another question for this one. Also included in this, we have to have time for every one of the docs to be installed and hooked up to every person that's using their personal devices. So that is a huge task to get them where they just slip it in and it works and pull it out and take it home. So I think that's a really, I don't know that we have the manpower to do that quickly, but the teachers can still use them, but we want them to have it with a doc as soon as they come here. They, as soon as the day one, they know how to dock it and it works perfectly.
That's correct, Dr. Roman. Thank you for bringing that up. And again, the tech team is committed, once we, once we can get these, these devices here in Acadicus, Texas, they are committed to spinning around the clock to get the devices out to our teachers and get them set up properly with the, with the LCD panels as well as with the docking station. So it does allow them, or allow us a little more time by extending this calendar.
Mr. Martin, you mentioned the laptops that get in the hands of our teachers. Extend upon how this is going to impact our students.
Again, the devices, the laptops will be able, we purchase Canvas and Seesaw and, which are learning management systems. And again, this is going to be the wave of the future, mobile, mobile computing basically, rather than the desktop that sits in the room. And in, in the event that, you know, we have a shutdown, our teachers are able to take these devices, pick up the device and take it with them. They have internet access at home or not, they're able to use this new laptop anywhere they, they go. So it is a huge advantage to have in the old desktop, which is tied down to one, one location in a building that you may not be occupying in the event of a shutdown like we'd had this past spring.
Mr. Martin, let's get a little more specific, though.
Okay.
Who the teachers currently have that will benefit our students whenever they get their laptops? What are we going to be able to do?
Well, we're going to be able to communicate with.
iPads, the devices the teachers currently have.
Yeah.
Oh, the iPads? Well, the plan is to recoup or recapture the iPads that we have, that we currently have out there that are issued to our teachers. With those iPads, we would re-image them and then reissue to students at the lower grade levels. Also, that goes for our Chromebooks, the, any teacher out there that has a Chromebook or we have Chromebook carts on our campuses, we would take, we would take those Chromebooks or redistribute those to those students who have indicated that they do not have a device to work with remotely at home. So it would basically be a, an exchange so that we would have those iPads available for our students.
How many, how many iPads would you see collecting from the teachers when you issue the laptops? How many are we talking about?
Ms. Morse, you want to help me on that one?
Yes, there would be around 500 that we would be collecting so we could put those into students' hands. So that will help our numbers while we're waiting on the project connectivity devices.
How long will it take us to collect those 500, re-image them and be ready to reissue them? Time line?
It will, as soon as I get them in my hands, all we have to do is. It will, as soon as I get them in my hand, all we have to do is click the erase button and, um, then just pop it back up and it will be ready for a student.
Right, well, I mean, that's what I guess what I mean is, you know, if you're talking 500 of them, realistically, how quickly are we going to be able to, to work through those and have them ready to go back out?
Um, the amazing thing is, is our, our campuses have been amazing to help, um, on the, their end. So, um, they're not putting so much on just the technology. We can pass them to them, they have specialists kind of on their campus that have been getting their student devices ready so we can pass them to them and they know how to wipe them clean, um, physically and, um, on the tech side, get them prepared and ready. So that way the technology team can be focusing on getting our laptops ready and set up for our teachers.
All right, I like the way that sounds, but I still feel like I'm not getting an answer. And that is, if, if, if we're delaying a week, if, if we're saying, hey, if, if, what I'm hearing right now from administration is, here, here are the benefits of delaying a week. And, and the expectation that it's creating is, my expectation right now is that if we were to, to support waiting till the 8th, that 500 iPads would have been re, re-turned back in, re-imagined, and then distributed back out to students on or before September 8th. Is that a correct expectation?
Yes, ma'am. If it means I have to work or we all have to work all weekend, we're going to get it done. So it's, it's, we're going to work hard and we're going to make it happen.
And if I might elaborate, the, the rationale, it's like a domino effect. We, I, we can't go to a teacher and take their device because they're constantly working and preparing for the first day. So the minute we are able to take the new device, put it in the hands of the teacher and, and then take the device, then we can work on the next domino is getting that device re-imagined out to the kids. So it's kind of a domino. I would love to be able to collect those, uh, and be able to do that, but then the hurricane traffic may not allow it, so we got to make sure those devices come in for our teachers. Uh, the, the priority is get that one done so it would release us so we could go ahead and work with the devices.
Yeah, and I understand the nature of that question is, if, if, if we take this step to delay, uh, at least I, I don't want to speak for the full board, feel like we need some assurances of what's going to, what's, what are we going to accomplish by delaying it that one week? Uh, and so that's kind of the nature of what I'm getting at. Mr. Matoya?
My question is, if we have those 500 iPads, you're not actually going to go and collect them and bring them over to your office to get it done? You're going to do it at each one of the schools, is that correct?
Yes, sir. So we would take it, um, say the high school has iPads. We're then going to take those and take them down to the elementary campuses because our pre-K through three, um, students will have iPads. So, um, if they're on campus at, say, Regay, then we'll just take them and put them in the stack that goes to the students. So we just have to.
When you say we, how many people are you actually talking that are going to be able to assist you in doing that and accomplishing those 500 iPads?
Yes, I have about seven texts, um, that we're all going to be out on deck. But like I said, we've got, I mean, our teaching and learning department has agreed to help us. Um, other departments, I mean, we, we're kind of a family, so we're all going to get together and we're going to get it done for, um, our kids and our community.
Senator.
We appreciate what you're doing.
Yes.
And how, and your commitment for our teachers and our students and, and our district and our community. That is a big, big thing. And you just represent all the people that work for NISD, including our teachers and principals and everybody else, everybody. We appreciate that kind of, we're going to get it done. Thank you so much.
Yes, that's a good, a great.
And I just want to look at it realistically. Today is the 25th. It's predicted on the 27th for us to encounter a hurricane. And what's the predicted speed of the wind?
Sixty to seventy miles an hour.
Sixty to seventy miles an hour. Earlier, my colleague, Mr. Matoya, said we're probably looking at, what, three to five days?
That's short, it's probably going to be longer.
Just for restoration of rights.
Hard to predict what Mother Nature will do.
Right, so I, I think either way we look at it, it's, it would be wise from a board perspective to allow that for not only the teachers and the administration, but for the families of our community. Cause God knows what we are about to encounter. And I just thought I would look at it from a realistic perspective because you're talking power outages, people being relocated and, you know, God, just pray no one gets injured.
Yes.
Stay out of the area like that. So, Madam President, I just thought I would.
Thank you, thank you Reverend for that, that very important.
And Reverend, if I may give an amen to that, uh, we, we are, uh, we are recommending this in a perfect situation, uh, aside from, you know, the acts of God that are, uh, were upon us. If, if we were in a perfect situation and the truck showed up on the 27th like it's scheduled to do, uh, barring the, the hurricane, uh, I feel very confident that the team would get these things out. But yes, I agree with you, we must be realistic. We do have a, a major, potentially major catastrophe, uh, headed our way. And we do have to be realistic about it. And again, the, the goal would be, yes, we would have those 500 iPads out there. We would have them ready to go. We would have our teachers', uh, laptops in their hands and they would be ready to go as well. So, uh, let me, let me just follow up with saying, yes, that would be a goal.
Let me, let me ask another question. In that, kind of that same vein of perfect world, let's take the hurricane and kind of set it to the side for a minute. On the, on the laptops, I know, you know, it's excellent. I'm glad because I know originally, I think we thought they'd be here on the 31st. So getting them on the 27th is, is, man, that, that would be wonderful. Um, I know that we were doing training, I believe it was just last week, my days are running together, but last week our teachers were being trained on Canvas. So this, if, if we're, if we delay this, the goal being they're not having to come in, get all situated on their desktop and then have to, one weekend to school, transition over to a laptop. We're basically saying you're going to get to start school with the device that you're going to be using. So you, to, to try to take a little bit of stress away there. Am I correct in, in, in following that logic that I think I'm hearing? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
And I would add to that same logic is what we're going to take from the teachers, uh, is going to benefit our kids. Because that's the big piece is the teachers will have their devices. It will be seamless, but hopefully, that knock on wood, that's because they've been on the device, they're able to log into campus, be able to look at it, be able to work with it. But much more is to our families because we can gain 500 devices that can come from the hands of teachers that they're currently working on and be able to realistically image those and get them back out to the kids a lot sooner, uh, than later. Uh, and I would say this, what we're doing right now, we, if you really look at this district, we have been not a one-to-one district and we were not using portable devices with teachers. And we haven't added additional personnel. So we have a tremendous crew that understands the challenges that we have before us. And we're going to be jumping in there with both feet to get our teachers prepared and give them the tools because that's what we're going to have to do right now because we've got all the technology for and it's coming. This will repeat itself whenever we move toward our student devices. And there we're talking into the thousands as we're going through that process to get equipped with our kids for the one-to-one devices.
So this feels very much like what, what I'm hearing. If I were to boil it down into, into one walkaway statement here, it's, this, this delay enables our leadership to ensure that teachers have the resources they need in the classroom on day one.
Yes, and when I made my statement and a gentleman spoke to it earlier, and I, and he's absolutely correct. Teachers are and have been working and they're prepared. When I sent that statement out to the community and I put that letter out and I said, I want the teachers to be prepared, it's because when we get the technology, it's going to jolt everything that they've done and they've been ready for this. And then all of a sudden now, here we come with new technology, their laptops. And for some of our folks, they're tech savvy, they're going to be able to run with it and not skip a beat. But we have other folks that are not used to using the, the laptop and they're going to have to acquaint themselves. And so I want to make sure that our gentleman that spoke earlier, he was absolutely correct. Our teachers are prepared and this is, this is what would take that preparedness and jolt it a little bit for our folks.
The, the one thing that, so you're saying the face shields that the district is.
Ooh, I'm losing you, Ms. Fitch. I have lost you. I'll let you know when I hear you again, but you're frozen right now.
If we get Ms. App back.
There you are.
There you are.
There you are, okay.
I was, I was kind of confirming, again, in my head, I'm kind of wanting to confirm down, you know, if we wait, if we wait and push it back to the 8th, it's going to give us a chance to get the laptops to the teachers. We're going to have this additional PPP mask. But we won't have these tri-fold desk shields that they've requested, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
All right, and then we've got iPads going out to students. Do we feel like we're going to be able to cover the needs of all of the students that indicated they need a device and they're choosing to learn at home?
We have those numbers there. Kristen, do you have those numbers that you, we talked about earlier?
Um, yes, I, I was actually extremely excited, um, about our community. Um, they have, um, indicated that for devices, 2,784 of our students actually have a device at home. Um, so we are going to, that's put us over the mark that we needed. So, um, that's really exciting, um, that we will have enough devices for all of our students. Um, now these are going to be our older devices until the new ones come in. But, uh, they'll, they will work, they are going to work with our programs that we've purchased. Um, and we just won't have a lot of wiggle room, um, but we will have enough to, um, successfully, um, be a one-to-one district until we can get those new ones in and so that our students aren't having to use their own devices.
Okay, how, how did the Canvas training go last week? Are, are teachers comfortable with the, I mean, I know we're, we've just like kind of blown their world up this summer by, by bringing this new, this entirely new computer software system in and this, it, it, so how, you know, and they get back here, I'm just, how's it going?
Canvas, I mean, there's a lot to Canvas. Um, we're still learning ourselves. Um, we've still got a lot of programs that we are going to, um, get involved into Canvas. So, um, it, it, it has been a real learning curve, but, um, they're doing good. I've heard positive things. Um, I've seen and heard a lot of teachers helping other teachers. Um, I've seen some of their cute ones that they're sharing out on, um, Facebook with their cute, um, bit emojis. So, um, I'm real excited. I think our kids are going to be real excited with the, um, how exciting the teachers, the teachers are and their passion for, um, switching this over.
I have a good question.
Mr. Irvin.
On the calendars, are we corresponding with SFA's spring break as well?
Great question. Mr. Martin?
That is good.
Are we corresponding with SFA?
Yes.
Is that, that, that was your question? We, we, uh, attempted to contact, uh, the high school today to make sure that we are in correspondence and have booked the Coliseum, for one thing, uh, for graduation. Uh, we didn't get a response this afternoon. Hopefully we'll have one first thing in the morning. Uh, with regards to our, our spring break, we had already originally, if I'm not mistaken, in the original calendar, which we have not changed, lined our, uh, our spring make, breakup with, uh, with Stephen F. Austin's spring break.
Okay, next question, I have those devices that we are receiving. They are already barcoded for future inventory? And is, we know which ones go to whom specifically for, you know, end of the summer or the beginning of the summer for inventory?
Coach Irvin, uh, part of the, uh, part of the, uh, Operation Connectivity program, are you talking about the new devices or the, the existing or, or all of them?
Yeah, new devices.
Okay, the new, yeah, so part of the, uh, program, uh, that, uh, the board graciously approved and participated in, uh, with state of Texas, uh, the, one of the requirements was that they are barcoded before we even receive them in inventory. We will receive a inventory, uh, through a spreadsheet of every, every single device that, uh, we, we have purchased. So in answer your question, yes, sir.
Any other questions about option A before he moves on to option B? All right, Mr. Martin, let's hear about option B.
Thank you, President Fitch. Uh, basically option B, we have, uh, again, taken the two days out for the, uh, we're still recommending the emergency weather days. Again, out of the bonus of caution for the incoming potential hurricane, uh, to East Texas. We're still recommending those two days, the 27th and 28th. But, uh, we're, 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 the recommendation would be adding, uh, days at the end of the year. So in that scenario, we would be, be ending school five days later uh, than May 28th, which would then be, the last day of school would be the 4th of June, which would, uh, be a budget impact, uh, for the board to consider.
The five days of impact would be, remember in calendar A, we, uh, took out staff development days. The consideration of this one is we leave all that intact and we have all the staff development days that we made a commitment that we were going to provide our staff. And then consequently that puts us beyond the number of days. Uh, this calendar here, uh, gives an addition, an abundance of more staff development. The teachers have been almost, if you really look at it, almost a month, uh, of days. Uh, we've been doing a lot of staff development, a lot of prepping, a lot of getting ready to move forward. This also continues with a number of days that are scattered throughout the year.
With your recommendation is option A?
My recommendation for the board is option A.
Thank you.
We've covered, we've covered a lot of staff development for our teachers, uh, up to this point for them to be prepared. Uh, and, uh, this one here, um, Ms. Barbara, are you there?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Can you share the cost with this one?
Yeah, what's the cost of option B?
Option B would run, uh, around between 800 and 900,000 dollars.
Uh, Mr. Whitaker, are you there as well?
Yes, sir, I am.
Uh, what are our contractual, um, concerns here as well?
Um, just extending outside of the, you know, the contracted days, uh, you know, we've had, we have the scheduled number of working days posted. And, and so again, just getting to, uh, options where, you know, the employees might not want to return back or might have any issues regarding that because we, again, we have the scheduled number of working days, uh, that have already been established. And so when you cut, even though you might pay employees, uh, that compensation, still some of them, well, I was only scheduled to work 187 days, I don't want to work 191 days.
And contracts have already been signed?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
What is, what is the implication if we went option A? Um, because we don't, we don't really have any, I guess, extra built-in, right? What happens if we have to close a campus?
Great question. Um, when we, the wonderful thing is that we have, uh, we still have time built into the system by starting the day, uh, we added 30 minutes of instruction, so we do have some flex to spare. The minute we get the devices in the hands of students and our teachers have been designing their lessons, we can go seamlessly straight into, uh, an asynchronous plan where kids are receiving instruction at campus. And the wonderful thing is, we can even get a flu epidemic, we can get, it doesn't have to be COVID. It could be a flu situation that should, that wipes out some kids, that now the kids have their devices, teachers and our staff are very preparing the instruction and we still would be able to meet the needs and structure for the kids.
So basically if we had to close a campus to face-to-face, those students would just automatically be moved to online?
Exactly.
Okay, so they're not missing instruction time?
Exactly, and I want to make sure that, uh, I know the board feels strongly about this, uh, when we've had conversations. There is nothing that replaces face-to-face instruction. And I don't want anybody out there saying we're equipping our folks with, uh, devices. Nothing replaces sitting in front of the teacher, but we at least providing them with the tools that if we had to do that, we would be able to continue to meet, uh, meet the needs of our kids.
And I think, I, I think that is, um, something that we need to. And I think, I, I think that is, um, something that we need to stress that by sta- starting a week later and sort of narrowing the time between, um, getting this one-to-one ready and actually gearing up for school, this needs to be stressed to parents because I know they're ready to get their, those that want face-to-face, they're ready for their children to get into school. And even those that want distance learning, they're ready for school to start. But if, if they could see that if we can narrow some of the time, the gap, so that there's less time of getting these devices into the hands of the students and getting them the practice they need and the familiarity so that, I mean, let's look around at all these other districts that have already started. They're having to close for two weeks or sometimes it's just a classroom that has to close. And if we have had a, a little bit more, um, opportunity to prepare our, our students and have the devices in their hands, then as Dr. Trillo said, we can more seamlessly go into, um, a distance learning for a short period of time if we have to. And I think that would really appeal to the parents because then there wouldn't be dead time and we wouldn't be back into the last spring where we're just handing out worksheets, you know?
I just, I would like to say, I know that a lot of the community was concerned that we're starting so late and that we have taken this time when other districts have started school. And I think if you look at the reality that what you guys have done, our administration, is really looked at every possible angle that we have. Of course, now we have this hurricane that's popped in, so that's, but yeah, other people have already started. There's already issues. Hopefully when we get started, we're going to be able to stay started. And, and not a guarantee, but I think that you guys have done a fantastic job of being able to put this all out so that we can have this. And I know that some community members are not, you know, not happy that we're not starting on the 31st or that we haven't started before. But I think this is the right direction that we need to go and I certainly support it 100%.
Leibeth, how do you feel about these calendar options, kind of coming from a, a teacher perspective? You and Mr. Nirmann have classroom experience.
Well, as I said, um, I, I think the more that, I think, I, I understand how the teachers are feeling, especially those at the high school. Because every year, you start with, and there's new things that they've thrown at you and you, you don't really know what's going on and you're having to learn it as the kids come. But, uh, if we can just put off this one more week and get these devices into the hands of the teachers, give them more time to learn this Canvas because clearly our training is, I mean, we've heard good things, but it's lacking. Uh, for as much money as that Canvas costs, they should have, you know, had experts on every campus. They should have offered to us. Um, and so we need, we need teachers to have more time on that. And as, but as Mr. Smith said, I know that some of that will involve having the, the students with you. But, um, I, I just, I think we're doing well with what we've got and considering that we don't really know the lay of the land that's ahead of us. And I like this option that it's going to give more time for us to get devices into the hands of every student, especially thinking of this new, um, I know, I know we call it the AB schedule for the high school, this staggering student schedule, which I kind of like better because of the alliteration. Um, where they are, I know. The, the reason AB is a problem is because we've had AB in the past and it had to do with one day you had certain periods and another day you had others. And this is so different. This is seven periods every day, but you're limiting how many kids are on campus. And that means that if I'm an ace, a, and I am, an A student in so many ways. But if I'm an A student and I show up to my classes, then on B day, when I'm not on campus, I am doing, I'm using my device and continuing my studying. You see, they are, they're a hybrid. The groups that are choosing face-to-face, they are a hybrid group. And they're not doing, you know, distance. That's my understanding. Am I right, Dr. Trillo?
Yes, ma'am. And in addition to that, we need to make sure it's clear so that we, and we'll work on that communication with our folks, with our staff and our parents, is this schedule, this staggered start is a transition for us to get to the regular school day. Uh, the goal is to get everybody face-to-face. So this is not a schedule that will run through semester or for the rest of the year. So when you hear this, that's why we've got to make it as, look as much as possible as to what the actual school year looks like. You're absolutely correct.
Well, and that's what I like about it because every student now is learning how to have this distance learning on their device so that, again, if we have to shut down, those high school students are going to be capable. And then the younger grades, depending on what their different campus needs are, they're going to have the extra help of their, their parents hopefully to help with it as well.
That's a really good point. I haven't thought about that. That's a really good point.
That's why it's good to have a retired teacher on our board.
Mr. Nirmann, what are your thoughts, sir?
I feel exactly what, uh, Ms. App said. Uh, however, I, I like for our teachers to be well-prepared, to know exactly what they need to do, exactly and how they need to do. Uh, I know they are anxious to start. They're probably more anxious than the students because they need to get on the right and figure out what they need to do and, slight good, something on. If we're ready to make a motion on that.
Well, any other discussion before we make a motion on this? All right, Mr. Nirmann?
Okay, I move that, like I said, as I stated, the school board approved option A instructional calendar for the school year 2020, 2021 as presented.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a, uh, motion by Mr. Nirmann, a second by Reverend Irving. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. All right, I believe that brings us to the last item on our agenda.
And I don't even need the agenda.
We have a motion to adjourn by Mrs. Winslow. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Matoya. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for your time this evening and your heartfelt discussion on this. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
See you, we'll see you in person next time, Leibeth.
Yeah.
Good job.
Yes, sir.
Yes.